All right, good evening ladies and gentlemen. If everybody could take their seat, we'll get started. Thank you all for being here. My name is Tammy Dana-Bashan. I'm the mayor of the city of Rowlett. Drew, how's my sound? Okay. He sometimes thinks I yell in this thing because I want to be heard. So, we're so glad you're here at the community center. And if you're watching on Facebook, we're so glad you're watching on Facebook. You know, it's interesting, we have these town hall meetings and we sometimes judge them by how many people are in this room. But really, how we need to judge them are how many people we end up engaging. And there's so many different ways to engage in today's 21st century. So, we're glad you're here because it would be kind of bad if I didn't have anybody to look at. But there's also lots of people joining us on Facebook. So, I'm going to introduce a few people. I've got my whole city council here. Mayor Pro Tem Martha Brown is en route. She'll fly in here sometime soon. Got Deputy Pro Tem Matt Grubasich, raise your hand please. Councilman Whitney Lanning. Blake Margolis, who's supposed to be sitting on the front row. Blake?[72.22][72.22](laughter) I just love calling him out. Councilman Browney Sherrill. And Councilwoman Pam Bell. Wonderful council, does a great job representing our citizens. We have City Manager Brian Funderbur. Deputy City Manager Paul Stevens. Assistant City Manager Mark McAvoy. We have Chief Howard. And we have Chief Godfrey. And then we also have all the department heads in the city represented here tonight. So, we will be able to address any question you throw at us, hopefully. So, what we're going to do tonight is we're going to spend the first 20 minutes watching the state of the city. And I'll apologize upfront if you've already seen the state of the city, but it doesn't hurt to see it again. The state of the city is something that the mayor is required to do annually. And it is just that. It is an address to the city about the state of affairs. And it's important information. And we thought it was very, very important to start our evening off with the state of the city because it is such good information. And I want to recognize Drew Rist in the back there. Drew, raise your hand. He is our Creative Services Director.[145.22][145.22](applause) If you haven't seen this state of the city, it is going to blow you away because of his creative capabilities. So, we so appreciate everything he does. Oh, he's waving me off. And we also have Denise Perrin back there. And she's our Community Relations Manager. And Denise is almost, is a part of almost every communication that comes out of this city. And we work a lot together. And I value her so much and I appreciate her so much. So, she'll be running the board tonight for the Facebook Live feed. So, we're going to start with the state of the city and then we'll do some other things. It's an exciting time to be a part of the Rowlett community. We are such an exceptional city. A beautiful place with fabulous people and an even brighter future. A place we call home.[211.62][211.62](music) Hello. My name is Tammy Dana-Bashan, Mayor for the city of Rowlett. Our population in the state of Texas is growing by over 1,000 people a day. And our city is certainly experiencing phenomenal growth and development. As a result, 2019 was another very busy year with major, high-quality projects springing up all across the city. Over 20% of the city's land remains undeveloped and landowners are capitalizing on our regional growth and our strong North Texas economic environment. In fact, Rowlett was recently named the 8th fastest-growing city in the United States by the US Census Bureau. Growth across North Texas represents significant opportunity, but it also means a need for increased resources, which becomes a strain on infrastructure, public safety, and city services. We are meeting those challenges. And even with these increased demands on our budget, our actual tax rate remained unchanged. Your local tax dollars fund our extensive services, including police and fire, infrastructure improvements and maintenance, public works, parks, and the library for only $4.15 a day for the average Rowlett resident. We are able to meet increasing budget needs without raising the actual tax rate, largely due to an increase in property valuations, as well as the 2015 and 2018 bond programs approved by our residents. This allows us to make major improvements and increase resources throughout the city. As a result of these bond programs, we are investing over $32 million in our neighborhoods with reconstruction of streets, alleys, and drainage systems.
Before, the street was, we had no sidewalks. None of these sidewalks were here. We, we just had a street with no curbs. And when it rained, the water would collect and it literally looked like a, like a lake. We see people all the time walking up and down the street. We, we have the little library and then we have the turquoise table. And so, that's, that's been a neighborhood gathering spot. Before, we wouldn't even have attempted anything like this.
In addition to improving our neighborhoods, we are investing over $27 million to reconstruct and improve our major thoroughfares and roadways and to implement traffic management systems to improve flow of traffic. Our residents demand and deserve a safe community. We are very fortunate to be served by our top-notch men and women in our police and fire departments who consistently provide exceptional services to our growing community. To meet the needs of our fire department, construction is now underway on a public safety training center and we are in design for a new fire station number two. And our upcoming 2020 budget includes the addition of eight police officers and one dispatcher to address an increasing response time on Priority One calls, our most critical level. Through a fun and innovative team, the CAPRA-accredited Rowlett Parks and Recreation Department enriches our city by providing inviting spaces, outstanding value, and memorable experiences. City parks are crucial to the healthy development of our city and the well-being of all of our residents, which is why we are investing over $12 million in capital improvements from the last two bond programs in parks across our entire town.
Every day, come up, six days a week, and walk this track quite often. I do about three miles outside and a mile and a half inside. My wife and I try to stay active as much as possible. And by coming up here and what they offer us, it helps us tremendously.
Our Waterview Golf Course recently underwent extensive renovations, including the replacement of an estimated 165,000 square feet of greens to Tiff Eagle, Bermuda. Maintaining the viability of this important recreational asset for our community was of utmost importance.
We are really excited about the changes of the golf course. We think it's going to set the foundation to create an environment for the golfers to really enjoy. I think we'll become one of the premier public-use golf courses in the Dallas-Fort Worth metroplex. I think the improvements that we made to the golf course along with the development Sapphire Bay here in the city really going to draw a lot of attention to the city of Rowlett.
Special events continue to shine in our city. The Rowlett Parks and Recreation Department is dedicated to providing quality events and festivals that the entire family will look forward to attending each year. One of the newest special events is Diverse City Day, an event to celebrate our diversity and promote an inclusive community.
The Taste of Diversity event was absolutely a success this year. We had our highest attendance. It was a great partnership with the Parks and Recreation Department. We also had an activity for children where they were given a passport, which gave them a chance to go visit all the booths that were at the event and get a stamp. The Rowlett Diversity and Inclusion Commission is charged with the mission of finding ways to include all of Rowlett's citizens in our city events and doings and operations. We'll definitely be working on our event for next year and bringing more to the table.
The Rowlett Public Library strives to meet the needs of Rowlett residents at every stage of life.
The new 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten program encourages parents and caregivers to read at least 1,000 books with their young children before they enter kindergarten.
Many adults turn to the library for GED and English as a Second Language tutoring programs.
My, most of my students are adults and they really need a lot more than just the grammar and also learning how to read and write. They like to learn how to speak and be able to go speak to their schoolteachers or go to the post office and be able to talk to them. So, it has been very successful in that. Not only do I teach them how to speak, but I also teach them how to live in our beautiful country. This is our, my map of glory for our library. As you can see, we can start from one end of the globe to the other. These are some of the students that came to our library to learn English.
We are excited to report that the city was able to lower our water rates for the upcoming year. This was possible by utilizing a more measured approach to capital investment over time. This has two benefits. First, it provides a direct benefit to today's customers, resulting in a $5.50 reduction in the monthly water rate. Second, it allows future customers to help pay for the cost of the system over time. And probably the best news of all, this approach is expected to keep future increases more modest while still taking care of the utility infrastructure that our community needs. With a major turnpike, light rail system, and a beautiful lake, Rowlett is the place to be. And we're attracting major developments all over our city. In 2019, the city added over 35 new businesses, saw private investment of over $58 million in commercial projects, including the opening of a 70,000-square-foot expansion of Baylor Scott &amp; White Medical Center at Lake Point, and the creation of over 200 new jobs. And since the adoption of Realize Rowlett 2020, the city has seen nearly $420 million in commercial private investment, with sales tax growth averaging 5% annually. Over 2,500 jobs have been created and another $1 billion in planned development and private investment is underway. A major accomplishment this past year was securing a new developer for Sapphire Bay, a unique 117-acre, $1 billion mixed-use surf-and-beach-based waterfront development unlike any other in the country. I personally would like to thank our residents for the incredible level of support provided as we were negotiating through this difficult situation. Your passion and commitment provided the necessary guidance to our council and staff, which will allow our community's vision to come to life.
So, Build Our Bayside was originally a grassroots effort that sprang out of all the negative publicity that was being distributed around by the developer toward the city and the city's leadership. We distributed almost 100 of these yard signs. We had about 500 supporters total on Facebook. And so, we were really happy that we were able to gain that much support in the community. But our main thing was the lagoon, the show fountain, and the trolley. And I feel like we've kept definitely the lagoon and the show fountain. And again, even with the concession of the trolley, I feel like having that surf area as a part of the attraction is really a nice touch. I think we're really excited about Sapphire Bay and what's to come and really looking forward to the benefit that it has for the city of Rowlett.
The recent Crystal Lagoon's amenity groundbreaking ceremony was just the start of good things to come. The village of Rowlett downtown is growing. Steeped in history, this area was once located on the historic Bankhead Highway. Through planning efforts, the city of Rowlett set out to maintain an organic feel to the downtown, embracing its history while creating an urban environment. The library makes its home in the village, and more restaurants and retail establishments are on the way, providing different and unique choices for dining and shopping.
Being a business owner here on Main Street, but also the president of the Rowlett Downtown Business Association, we are so excited to see all the activity coming back here in downtown. So, our main goal is to get the vision here with the city, where they have a great vision here, work with them, and we can bring more and more business down here. So, again, it's exciting to see, you know, the bankheads and the new business opening here, but we've got so much more potential here in downtown as well.
Many opportunities still exist for Rowlett. One example is the North Shore Commercial District. With over 1,300 available acres of privately-owned land primed for commercial development, the North Shore provides a one-of-a-kind opportunity to bring more businesses with quality jobs and diversify the local economy. We value our residents and create ways to celebrate, to assist, and to provide unique learning opportunities. The city provides several ways for citizens to learn about the basic roles and functions of municipal government in interactive environments, including citizen academies and boards and commissions. Are you amongst the select few who can call themselves a Tri-Academy alumni? Serving as a volunteer on boards and commissions is an impactful way that citizens can participate in the community's decision-making process.
I think by volunteering for one of the city boards, you get a chance to provide input on some of the things that you might find or concerns that maybe other people didn't even think about. You know, just working with other people, getting to know them. I have some new friends now because I've been involved with the senior advisory board. I strongly recommend that people volunteer because a lot of times you don't really know what's going on until you get involved with something. And also gives you a chance to maybe make a few things a little better.
We love to highlight citizens who go above and beyond in our community. Every month, the Spirit of Rowlett Award recognizes a Rowlett citizen who has encouraged, supported, and acted in a way that positively impacts everyday life in our community. The Good Neighbor Awards recognize Rowlett citizens who contribute to the overall aesthetics and health of our city by maintaining exceptionally clean and beautiful properties. Our code enforcement officers recognize properties every quarter from each quadrant of Rowlett with our signature yard signs. To show our deep appreciation to those members of our community who have dedicated their time and service to our nation, we instituted the Rowlett Veterans Recognition Program. We are so honored to celebrate a local veteran at our city council meetings. Since opening in February 2019, the Veterans Resource and Outreach Center has served as a new base of operations for onsite programs and referral services for the veteran community. The VROC, operated as part of the Life Message not-for-profit organization, is committed to bringing long-term solutions to those who have served our great nation.
We've had over 1,300 veterans walk through the door here at the VROC. An astounding number. We had no idea of the number of veterans that were out here that needed help. We've been able to help not only, you know, feeding and clothing, you know, and helping in those areas, but really here at the Veterans Center, we've been able to help veterans with jobs. We've been able to have veterans, help them with their claims and their benefits through the VA. Mental health is a big component of what we do here, offering classes and information and education. And we're so glad to be able to be that resource for our city and the surrounding communities to be able to help veterans in need.
While there are many things to celebrate in our city, the future holds challenges not only for Rowlett, but for the entire North Texas region. The desirable business and living environment and the extraordinary influx of new company headquarters is causing people to move to Texas in droves, which strains regional resources including infrastructure, water supplies, transportation, and school systems. Residents across North Texas are concerned these changes are negatively impacting their quality of life. It is imperative that cities manage this growth effectively and capitalize on the right development opportunities which will enable the resources required to manage growth. We recently developed a new strategic plan and updated our comprehensive plan with significant public input and public engagement. These two documents provide guidance to our elected and appointed decision-makers, staff, property owners, and developers to understand and follow how the public wants our community to look in the coming decades. 2019 was a brutal year as our state representatives passed legislation that will hamstring cities and counties. The pain will definitely be felt here in Rowlett in the coming years, especially in regards to maintaining sufficient public safety resources and infrastructure needs for our growing region. Reform bills that cap the rate at which cities can raise property taxes, blocked cities from charging private telecommunications companies for using public right-of-way, and limited a city's ability to regulate building standards, all will negatively impact our community. At the root of all of this was the desire by certain state elected officials to reduce local decision-making and to increase authority at the state level. We believe that our residents know what is best for our community and that local decision-making is desirable as those closest to the residents can best serve our individual communities. We will continue our fight for local decision-making and we are hopeful that some of this damage can be mitigated in the next legislative session. Many of our facilities are in poor condition or inadequate to serve the needs of our growing community. We are currently undertaking an extensive facility needs assessment so that we can ensure that facility decisions made over the coming years will not only serve our community now, but will also satisfy our needs at full build-out. The 2015 and 2018 bond programs provided resources to enable important infrastructure, public safety, and recreational improvements which have enhanced our quality of life. We anticipate continuing future bond programs at three-year intervals as long as the economy remains strong and our budget enables sufficient funding for operational needs and capital infusion. Texas has experienced rapid growth since the last census in 2010, which reflects the strength of our great state. If our communities are fully counted in the 2020 census, experts believe that Texas could gain up to three additional seats in Congress. It would also bring in funding for population-based federal programs that our communities need. An undercount of Texas's population by even 1% could result in a $300 million loss per year over the next decade in federal funding. Please make sure to participate in the 2020 census. With so much happening in Rowlett, communication with our citizens is critical. Accountability and transparency are hallmarks of a well-run government, which is why the city of Rowlett has made government transparency one of its priorities. Most of us now use our mobile devices to get information. Rowlett.com is built on a mobile responsive platform, making it a snap-to-view search for meetings, fill out forms, pay a bill, find a park, or visit the library. Social media has changed the way we do business. We share our story through Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. And our public officials are very accessible in person, on the phone, and via social media. Police, fire, library, animal services, public works, and parks and recreation all have their own Facebook pages, in addition to the extremely informative and active City of Rowlett, Texas Facebook page. We use the latest technology to keep in touch with our residents, businesses, and guests 24 hours a day, seven days a week. From our award-winning RTN16 programs to our weekly and monthly electronic city newsletters and notifications, you are able to decide exactly what information you want and how you would like to receive it. And we operate the Connect Rowlett Smart 911 system, which sends alerts via phone, text, and/or email to residents for important updates such as utility outages, water main breaks, major crimes in progress, and weather alerts. Public meetings are now streamed in high-definition with closed captioning, which provides an opportunity for those with hearing disabilities to participate in our local government. An indexed agenda now accompanies on-demand videos, making it seamless for viewers to jump to meeting topics or agenda items. The city also launched the Online Strategic Plan Dashboard, which illustrates important key strategies and objectives for our community and highlights their status as well as accomplishments by city staff. Our mission is to serve the residents of Rowlett by providing innovative, citizen-centered services that exceed the expectations of our residents, businesses, and guests. We do this by instilling a value system that focuses on service levels, our people, the highest degree of integrity, responsible stewardship, innovation, and transparency. That is the true spirit of Rowlett. We will continue to keep our city great by working together and creating an atmosphere that is inclusive to all. Rowlett is a great place to live, work, and play, and we have such a bright future.[1418.83][1418.83](music) We have a few people in the audience that were guest stars in that video. I'm sure you recognized several of them, and we really appreciated their involvement. You know, getting, getting the citizens involved is, is what we're all about. And receiving your input and your, your thoughts is one of the reasons we're here tonight. So, thank you for letting us show you that. I hope you enjoyed it. We're going to do a couple things tonight. I do have a brief presentation. I don't know what the definition of brief is. There's a couple topics that I want to proactively address, and those are going to be multifamily housing, traffic, the 86th legislative session, crime, and a brief discussion about the census. So, I'm going to go through those topics, and I have some slide presentations for those. And then we're going to open it up for general Q&amp;A. All right? So, we're going to start with probably, you know, the number one exciting topic in the town, which is multifamily. So, want to go through some of the real facts that are going on, not only in the city of Rowlett, but across the region in regards to multifamily housing. You know, there's, there's several myths out there in regards to multifamily housing that we're going to hope to provide some real factual information to you. I'm not trying to convince you that you like it if you don't or you don't like it if you do. I just want to set the groundwork for some real facts that are out there in regards to multifamily housing. So, myth number, well, I'm not even going to go to myths yet. The myths of multifamily housing. We have too many apartments in Rowlett. These will be cheap apartments. The city can't absorb these apartments. Apartments are causing traffic problems. Apartments cause increase in crime. And the city council is approving rezoning left and right from whatever to multifamily zoning. So, we're going to break some of those down here in this presentation. What I want to start with is a chart that, somebody posted this on Facebook. And if you're in the audience, would you raise your hand? I don't think he's here. I saw this chart and I just fell in love with it. And I forwarded it to a bunch of people and I said, "This is exactly the graphic that we've been trying to present that really, really tells a story." You know, nirvana does not exist in a community. And, and guess what? Nirvana is different for every single one of us. So, it's really difficult to balance all these things, to come to the right decisions for the community as a whole. But that's what we're charged to do. And that is the path we have been under since 2011, when we developed our new comprehensive plan, Realize Rowlett 2020, is to find that balance in the community that works for our community and is an inclusive community for all. You know, this, this chart really tells a good picture. You know, I want more services. Well, how do you get more services? You can increase taxes. You can create more density. I want lower density. Well, what happens if you have lower density? You have higher taxes. You might have service cuts. I want low taxes. How do you ensure low taxes? Create more density, have service cuts. So, somewhere in that spectrum is where every community lands, and every community is different. So, I just wanted to show that graphic so that, I think it's a good visual graphic of, of what we go through in our decision-making process. So, myth number one. We have too many apartments in the city of Rowlett. So, this is very current data from the Apartment Association of Greater Dallas. And this is the number of apartment units per 1,000 residents. So, I'm just going to call it per capita from now on, but it's per 1,000 residents. And these are the communities that they reported on, and these are communities all around our area. And, you know, the high is Addison. Addison has 625 apartment units per 1,000 residents. Addison is an anomaly. We often include it in our information that we present to the public, but then we like take it out of the computations because it's such a different animal than all the other cities in the area. If you exclude Addison, the median average for all of these cities, the median, is 102 units per 1,000 residents. We, in Rowlett, you can see we're third from the bottom. We have 61 units per 1,000 residents. This is existing and under construction. Okay? We're going to talk about planned in a minute. This isn't just what's on the ground today and open and operating. This is existing and under construction. And you can see some of these other communities, Louisville 243, Richardson 175, The Colony 151, Plano 137, Frisco 109, go down to Garland's 87, and Rowlett 61. One of the things that's happening in the city of Rowlett is there has been so much construction. construction over the last 10 years, which really has been a result of a planned, you know, diversity of housing. And a lot of those have popped up in the last several years, and we had such a low stock to begin with. It really is deceiving when you look at it, and this really tells a true picture of where we are at compared to most of the surrounding communities. And I want to give you one other number. Sorry. Brian and I like numbers, and we did this presentation. The mean average, if you take out Addison, the mean average is 124 units per 1,000 residents. And, you know, we're half that. So, we are not overpopulated in regards to apartments per 1,000, per capita, compared to our surrounding cities. Okay? So that's myth number one. Myth number two. These will be cheap apartments. This graph shows the rent range for all the recently-built apartments, one-bedroom and two-bedroom. And you can see that these rents are very high. In many cases, these rents are higher than a lot of mortgages in the town. You know, a one-bedroom, 1,000 to 1,500, 1,100 to 1,700. A two-bedroom, 1,500 to $2,000 per month. These are not cheap apartments. These are market-rate, high-quality developments. These are not the apartments of yesteryear. So, that's myth number two. I do want to mention one thing. There's only one workforce housing development currently approved in the city of Rowlett, and that is only 76 units. So we hear a lot about, you know, "We don't want those apartments in our town. We don't want those people in our town. You know, this is going to attract crime, and I'm going to address all that." We have one workforce housing development, underdevelopment, in the city of Rowlett. These types of developments are for working-class people. For people that you interact with every day of your life, teachers, police officers, municipal employees, these are places that people that are living paycheck to paycheck could possibly afford. In the United States, it's estimated that eight out of every 10 households are living paycheck to paycheck. The ability for our children to enter into the housing market like we did, if you're my age, is no longer available. Housing prices have escalated across the country and certainly are escalating in the Dallas area. I attend a lot of conferences with mayors across this country. And our problems, and I'm not saying our problems aren't important, they are. Our problems in North Texas are the envy across the nation. It's perspective. And again, I'm not saying we don't have problems. We do. But you've just got to put them in perspective sometimes. Myth number three. The city can't absorb apartments. So, when we, since the inception of Realize Rowlett 2020, which started in 2011, and then the development of form-based code in 2012, we have added over 3,000 multifamily units in the city of Rowlett. They're either built or under construction. That's an average of approximately 410 units per year. According to the study, a professional study commissioned in our 2019 comprehensive plan update, we can absorb 527 units per year at average rents of about $1,400. So as a result, the delivery of multifamily, since the inception of Realize Rowlett 2020, we are able to absorb, and we actually are 920 units below that absorption rate. Okay? So that's again the stock of existing and under construction. The other side of the coin here is we have units planned. You know, we're talking Sapphire Bay, Global Site, Rowlett Station, another development in Village of Rowlett downtown, Beacon Harbor, we're not sure where that stands. But there's other units that are planned. So what we have to do when we're making decisions is factor in not only what's here and under construction, not only what our current vacancy rates are, but also what's in the pipeline potentially. And when you consider what's in the pipeline, we have over five years of absorption of what is planned, plus needing to absorb what's currently built and not occupied yet. So council has been very, very diligent in regards to considering all of these facts when making decisions, and we're going to talk about, a little bit about that in a minute. The other thing I want to talk about is there have been 44,000 apartments, there are, 44,000 apartments being built in North Texas right now. That is staggering. And the predicted vacancy rate for 2020 across that area is 7.7%. 165,000 units have been added in the last 10 years. You heard in the state of the city, you know, the population is increasing by over 1,100, right now, the state demographer just released new information, it's increasing over 1,100 individuals, people per day in the state of Texas. Over half of that is people moving in, and a little bit under half of that is births exceeding deaths. The population is increasing tremendously. In addition, 1,000 new jobs are created daily in the state of Texas. Estimates are that this population influx, approximately 45% of those individuals, will want to move into multifamily developments instead of single-family homes. That's what's driving this market across North Texas. And right now, the North Texas area is the third, actually the DFW area, is the third highest market in the U.S. behind New York and LA in regards to multifamily developments. And remember where Rowlett is in all this. Third from the bottom in regards to the number of units per 1,000 residents. So, perspective. Myth number four. Apartments will increase crime. You know, we're consistently listed as one of the safest cities in Texas, ranking ninth in our most recent update from safehome.org. Workforce housing, luxury multifamily, senior living, mixed-use developments being built in Rowlett do not have any more impact on crime than comparable single-family developments. The crime rate in Rowlett is impacted and being driven by the substantial and significant growth in the region. Numerous factors, including socioeconomic demographics, have a bigger impact on Rowlett's crime rate than the existence of additional multifamily developments. And you can see these numbers. You can see the calls for service in '17, '18, and '19 for multifamily and non-multifamily. You can see the number of units. You can see the average calls per unit continue to go down, and the volume is increasing just slightly. Crime is not increasing because of multifamily units in the city of Rowlett. And we're going to talk about overall crime in a minute, but that's specifically related to multifamily units. Myth number five. The council has been rezoning to add more apartments. Talked about in 2011, we adopted the comprehensive plan, Realize Rowlett 2020. The desire to diversify the city's housing is directly derived from one of the guiding principles of Realize Rowlett 2020, to make Rowlett a community that is attractive to people at all stages of their lives. This is a history of multifamily zoning in Rowlett. The development for multifamily that is currently occurring in the city of Rowlett has been a result of purposeful planning, not overwhelmingly a result of rezoning individual projects. You can see the progression here, 2011 through 2014, adoption of Realize Rowlett 2020, rezoning of downtown, Healthy Living Signature Gateway, Woodside Living, rezoning of North Shore. Then you go to 2015 through 2017. Annexation and original zoning of Bayside, which is also called Sapphire Bay on the South Side now, rezoning of Downtown East, a global site potential, that's one of those that's planned. 2017 rezoning of a very small piece in the North Shore at the request of the landowner. Lakeview Senior Living, which is 100% age-restricted, and the Residence of Long Branch, which is that 76-unit workforce housing complex I talked about. In 2018 through 2020, we have rezoned one property, and we just did that, and that's at the corner of Chisa and Miller, and the developer is bringing a true mixed-use development to that corner. And the developer's original proposal was 40 condo units, and we were highly encouraging a change in that, and the developer agreed. There's going to be 20 condo units on the second floor with commercial space on the first floor. That's all the rezoning that has happened. The other thing I want to mention is, you know, there's a lot of discussion about, you know, we want people in the city of Rowlett that are homeowners. We want people that put a stake in the ground and are going to stay in the city of Rowlett. What I want to also tell you is that we've had renters all along. There are over 2,000 single-family homes in this city that are rental units. That's 10% of our housing stock. And they've been here all along, and they're still here, and they're wonderful residents. So I want to talk briefly about what are the benefits of multifamily development? You know, first of all, multifamily developments, they help diversify the city's tax base and housing stock. We've talked about that. In general, higher density brings certain benefits that purely single-family neighborhoods cannot. For example, higher density can attract a different mix of retail than usually is attributed to an area dominated by single-family. Restaurants need volume to be successful, and higher density can be desirable markets for restaurateurs. Second, multifamily pays property taxes just like single-family does. One of the differences there is they don't have exemptions. They don't have home set exemptions. They don't have senior exemptions. So you realize more dollar-for-dollar for multifamily. And based on the multifamily units that are in the city of Rowlett, for every one acre of multifamily, it would take three to four acres of single-family to generate the same amount of property taxes. Also, multifamily brings volume of residents in and obviously has a positive impact on sales taxes. And then there's water. Anybody here ever hear me talk about water in the city of Rowlett? Come on. One of my favorite subjects. Certainly, bringing in that density helps spread out that water that we have to purchase for North Texas Municipal Water District under the take-or-pay that we are not able to sell to our residents. So that benefits all of us. And also, we redid our water rates 2018, 2018, where we allocated a fair burden to multifamily units, and prior to that, single-family units were really subsidizing multifamily units in regards to water. So we fixed that. So myth number six. Apartments are driving huge increases in traffic. Anybody frustrated in the city of Rowlett driving? I am. Anybody frustrated in the DFW area driving? I am. So, we've looked at this very carefully, and what I want to tell you is certainly more density brings more traffic, right? I mean, there's just a direct correlation. But we've looked at traffic counts, and actually, our traffic counts have stabilized two-year period or gone down. And the reason is, is because we now have George Bush, and we have DART, and, you know, people are taking different routes around the city. But what's really, really self-evident is that our rush hour traffic is worse. There's just no doubt about it, right? We have approximately 40,000 cars going down Highway 66 on a daily basis. What we know is about 2/3 of those are coming from outside the city of Rowlett and driving through our town. What do we do about that? I don't know if we want to put signs at city limits, you know, but probably not a good idea. But certainly, the improvements on I-30 that are planned will help that because 66 is used as an alternative route. Certainly, population increases in the city of Rowlett have caused increases in traffic, but the lion's share of all this congestion is due to traffic from communities outside of our own individual one that are passing through the city of Rowlett. So, that's it, multifamily. I'll take questions, but that's it for my presentation. The next thing I want to talk about is the legislative session. I talked about it a little bit in the state of the city, so I'm not going to go into great detail. In 2019, 7,500 bills were introduced. Approximately 25% of those would affect the cities. At the end of the day, at the end of the legislative session, 1,437 bills were passed, 330 of which impacted cities in some way. You heard me with some pretty strong language in the state of the city, and I believe it to the core. There was a concerted effort by state legislators to take local decision-making away from municipalities, cities, and counties. We fought it. We'll continue to fight it. It absolutely has a negative impact on our community. Three items I mentioned in the state of the city, I'll mention briefly again here. The big one is Senate Bill 2. This reduces the cap on property tax growth on existing properties, not new construction, but existing properties. The cap used to be 8%. The cap now is 3.5%. What that means is if we produce a budget that exceeds that 3.5% cap, then it automatically triggers an election for the November period, this would be November of 2020, and the voters decide whether to accept that proposed tax rate or not. The couple of messages here are, you know, the growth is phenomenal, and the state didn't limit their ability to handle the growth, but the state legislators absolutely restricted cities and counties from being able to handle the growth that we have to manage day in and day out. The other thing I want to mention is, this is going to really be difficult administratively to get the budget done, and I don't want to get into all the minutia, but the timetable just doesn't work, and they didn't care. So, everything's going to be really consolidated. We're going to have to make some really hard decisions. It's absolutely going to impact our ability to fund public service, public safety. It's going to absolutely impact our ability to continue down our road of improving our infrastructure, and we're going to be working really hard to come up with the best answers for the community, and there's a good possibility that we'll be coming to the voters in November with you all making decisions, if you're willing to invest to continue some of those Senate Bill 1152. Quite frankly, this was pressure from lobbyists and big-business telecom communities. They didn't want to pay the fees for the services that we provide to them, and so the legislation cut them more than in half. So, where we are required to provide right-of-way for cable, both cable and phone services, they're only required to pay for one of those going forward and the lesser of those. So for the city of Rowlett, that impacted our budget this fiscal year by 154,000. For cities of Dallas and those big cities, it's millions and millions of dollars. And then House Bill 2439, this one is going to affect many in our community. This really puts a restriction on our ability to determine what kind of building materials we want in our community. So we're going to find changes throughout our community. Historically, when we say, "You have to have 100% masonry on your home, 95% masonry on your home," we're not necessarily going to be able to do that anymore. So... So we're going to have communities that, you know, look all congruent, and then we're going to have new construction that's potentially totally out of place. So this is something that we were very, very, another one of those that we're very, very frustrated with. Because we cannot make decisions for our community like we have historically on building standards. What I want to talk about now is crime and policing. Rowlett is consistently ranked as one of the safest cities in Texas. In 2019, as I mentioned, we were named the ninth safest city by SafeHome.org. We're going to give you some numbers. Again, 2018 and 2019, the number of Priority One calls actually decreased 5.3%, but look at our response time. It increased by 27.2% from 6 minutes and 41 seconds to 8 minutes and 30 seconds. That's directly as a result of increase in non-Priority One calls taking up resources of our police officers. So, you know, we've been seeing these stats. So you can look at the 911 dispatch. You can see the increase in 911 calls, up 2.4%. Non-911 calls, up 20.7%. And also, another increase in average response time on 911 calls by our operators. So when we looked at this very carefully, what we did was budget additional resources. And we added one dispatcher for this year's budget and eight additional police officers. And that is a direct result of these increasing response times on Priority One, or on total calls. So what's really happening in the city of Rowlett in crime? So here are stats for '17, '18, and '19. And the '19 column is the first one on your left. And these are the six highest Priority One call categories in regards to the volume of incidences. So we got family violence, we got burglary in progress, we got criminal mischief, we got missing child, we got psychiatric assistance, we got robbery in progress. And what you can see is for the top six Priority One calls, there really hasn't been significant increase. There's been a slight increase, but, you know, 410 in '17, 417 in '18, sorry for all the numbers, 470 in '19. But overall, Priority One calls have decreased over those three years. And then you can see the increase in all-call volume. So I thought that would be good information for you have of what's going on with some of the higher crime areas in our city. So what are we doing to make our city safer? Certainly, the schools are a top priority. You know, we partner with the Garland Independent School District and the Rockwall Independent School District, and we provide a lot of resources, joint resources. We have 10 school resource officers dedicated to our schools. Rowlett High School has two. Schrady Middle School has one. Coyle Middle School has one. Our elementary schools share a school resource officer, so one school resource officer for every two elementary schools. And we do a lot of activities. We do a lot of joint activities with the Garland and the Rockwall Independent School District to make sure not only our first responders are prepared, but that our students and our school administrators are prepared. And then what are we doing in our community to make it safer? Talked about, we added eight police officers for the fiscal 2020 budget. We are using crime analytics to a much greater degree to make sure we understand exactly what crime is happening and where it's happening so we can target response to it. And we created a special crimes unit to do exactly that, to address those targeted areas where we're seeing volume. We've also staggered our patrol and added a power shift to increase coverage during shift changes. And we've added an investigator to reduce caseloads of other detectives and enhance efficiency in that area. You know, we provide a lot of other resources. We got a police academy, citizens' police academy, if you haven't done it, I highly encourage it. We got VIPS, Volunteers in Police Service. We do active shooter training. We have civilian response police training, CRAZE. We do defensive tactics for women. And certainly, we have a lot of communication that we put out to the public of what's going on in your city. So just a couple other topics. I guess just one other topic. That's the census. And I did, again, I talked about this a little bit in the State of the City, but it's upon us now. So in March, the census will open up. And for the first time this year, you will be able to complete that online. You don't have to. You can still do it on paper. But they do have an online capability this year, this decade, for the first time. It's really important, so please help get the word out. Please make sure you participate personally in the census. And please get the word out that, you know, this is information that is critical to our community and to North Texas and to the state of Texas. And your responses can only be used to produce statistics, and they cannot be used against you by a government agency. Okay. So that was a lot of information. I hope that was good information. We will now open it up for Q and A. And I have, like I said, all my council here and city staff here, so hopefully, we can address any questions you have on any topics you'd like to talk about. And we'll have people with microphones. We'll start here with Michael. If you could just state your name, and if you were a star in the film like you were, you could say, you know, that.
As a quick star. The question I have...
Michael Britt.
Michael Britt, I'm sorry. Forgot the main thing. The question that I have about the 3.5% cap and not having an election is if we have growth to the point that we need to increase our expenses 4% to maintain the same level of services, do we have to bring down services or have an election?
That's exactly right, Michael. So what I'm going to put to the side is if we have new property tax revenue as a result of new construction, that's off in its own little bucket. So we're talking about existing development, year-over-year increase in property taxes. So if we need 4% growth in that area to maintain our current level of services, we will have to go to an election. Or we'll have to cut services. So let's say that's what our budget shows, that we need that 4% number. We'll go to the, potentially, this is a decision we make as city management and city council, but let's say we go to that election. And let's say the voters turn that down. We got to go cut services. And by the way, we have utilized 8% growth historically because there are so many needs in this community. So even just going to 4% cuts in half what we've been doing historically. Did that answer?
Hello, I'm Kenneth Williams, and I just wanted to say something about the workforce housing. I think nowadays, particularly with younger people, there are so many people who are working hard, and they're spending more than 30% of their income, which is what we kind of would like them to spend on housing, and they're spending 40% or even 50% of housing. And so I think we really need to think about having workforce housing that's going to allow people who are struggling, you know, a chance to get a leg up. You know, my own daughter, she's a very hard-working young lady, and she's, you know, she's struggling because the rents are so high here. She lives in another part of town, but the rent is very high there. And I would really strongly encourage the city to decide to support workforce housing.
Thank you so much, Kenneth. And, you know, I gave that statistic that eight out of 10 households are living paycheck-to-paycheck in this nation. You know, Rowlett's a very fortunate community. We don't necessarily have that situation. But we have a lot of people that would like to live in the city of Rowlett that can't afford it, that work in the city of Rowlett, that are part of the families that do live in the city of Rowlett. So it is a very, very important topic. And the number-one problem across the country is affordable housing. Thank you.
And that's what I want to talk about.
Name?
Barbara Holst. I'm on the board for the Rowlett Housing Finance Corporation. And 76 apartments is definitely not enough. And the thing of it is, is we want to serve the people that need affordable housing. We're talking about seniors that are struggling with their incomes. We're talking about hard-working people that are living paycheck-to-paycheck. These are families. These are single mothers and fathers that want the best for their children. And not only that, there are young people that are just starting out. They've left their home, and they want to be independent, and it's too expensive. They need a place to live. With the schools that we have here, with the recreational facilities that we have, and with the economic development opportunity that we have with Sapphire Bay, people will have the opportunity to thrive here. And not just thrive here, but actually contribute to our community. And we want to, we are looking at developments that we can bring to Rowlett that will give those people the opportunity to live here and contribute to our community.
Thank you, Barbara. There's a gentleman right here.
Hello, my name is Sonny. I have two questions. One is in regards to the 3.5% increase in taxes. If you can specify a little bit better, is it in regards to property taxes, the evaluation of the property? Is it in regards to what kind of parameters around the 3.5%? The second question is in regards to the workforce housing. Could you specify the parameters around that? And is it based on income? Is it based on age? Is it based on, you know, certain setting, certain rent? What are the parameters for those two things?
Thank you very much, Sonny. So when I was preparing for this, trying to figure out how I was going to talk about this 3.5%, I could go this deep or I could go this shallow. And I was like, okay, I'm going to try to do this. So I think the simplest way I can explain it, and I'll watch Brian and see if I'm doing it right. So what are the property taxes you collected on your development last fiscal year? And what are the property taxes, the dollars? And what are the property tax dollars you're going to collect on those properties this year, those same properties? And you can grow that by 3.5% without triggering an election? He nodded. Valuation. Property tax dollars.
So the evaluation is the main contribution?
The valuation is the, yes. Because you have to use the same tax rate. And as Matt Grubasich just said, the city has nothing to do with the valuation of your property. That's all determined by ARCAD in the case of Rockwall properties and DCAD in the case of Dallas County properties. And if you want me to have political comments in regards to how that's done, stay after. I'll be glad to talk to you about it. Sorry. I went off there. Okay. So affordable workforce housing. Barbara, do you want to take that?
There are different programs. Lot of them are dependent on income. And anyone that becomes a part of a workforce housing is screened. So we're not talking about people that are coming in that will be a negative impact on the community. We're talking about people that will be a positive impact. But these are primarily people with jobs that are working and just trying to get by. And they need the little extra help so that they have some additional money for their children, for medical and whatever. And I have an expert back here that can help some if we needed some additional explanation.
But I will say, as a young person coming into the community, as a young person myself coming into the community, it is very, very hard to get a foothold and to plant anywhere coming in, you know, late 20s, early 30s with a couple of kids. It is very hard to start. So I'm very positive. I just wanted to have some parameters.
Thank you, Sonny. It's usually based on average median income, AMI, and a percentage based on size of household. And it varies depending on how the workforce housing development is financed. Good enough? I got another nod. All right. I don't know who you are, but I think I'm glad you nodded. Okay.
Hi, Dennis O'Reilly. I'm curious if you could provide some insight on widening Miller Road and what might need to happen to get that widened across the lake?
Write your congressman. No, thanks, Dennis. Write your county commissioner. Okay. So in the 2018 bond, the voters approved the funding for widening Miller Road from Dalrock to west of Chisa to the railroad tracks. So that will be widened to a four-lane road divided and sidewalks. And we're currently in the process of planning that construction. Paul? Yes?
That is correct. It's being engineered as we speak.
Okay. Then in regards to Miller Road from the railroad tracks to PGBT, that bridge is owned by the city of Dallas. And we are working so hard with the appropriate parties to get that prioritized for funding. I've heard estimates from $20 million to $36 million, $37 million just to redo that bridge. So Paul, do you want to say anything else about the Miller Road Bridge? Do you have a little bit more color commentary there?
Sure, Mayor. One thing that I will say, that we have a submitted application to Dallas County. It's part of their major capital improvement program grant, and we did estimate a $40 million price tag for that. So for the city to be able to do that, we're certainly going to have to partner with Dallas County, city of Dallas, or federal funds or whatever. So we're certainly trying to do just that.
I won't be mayor. It's not all about me, though. When do you think we'll have the Miller Road construction started and ended for... Is he paying attention?
I'm looking for...
Gary.
Gary.
Gary. What do you think the timing will be for start of construction of widening of Miller Road from Dalrock to the railroad tracks?
About 60% design now.
60% design now. I couldn't hear. Paul, can you say that in the microphone?
So we're at 60% design right now, and construction should start by the end of the summer.
And how long a construction project, do you know?
It's about 200 days.
200 days. And then Paul or Gary, whoever wants to take the Miller Road Bridge, what's the timing of, like, hearing back from Dallas County? And what's that whole process, timing-wise?
They'll begin an evaluation period of the grant applications the end of this month or February, and the actual awards will be this summer.
So we'll know if it's one of the projects by this summer?
That's correct.
And if it's not, then we start all over with the timetable again?
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello, Marcus Harris. Not the greatest public speaker, so please forgive me. But two questions also. The first one comes from the diagram that you had put up. It states with the increased density, it's a way to lower taxes. So when we're building this multifamily housing, is that going to affect the tax rate? Could it possibly go down because of the increased population? And the second was, you stated there was only one rezoning. So my question is for the individuals in Liberty Creek behind us, the green belt back there, they're now coming through and doing work back there with bulldozers. When we heard that that was actually turned down, and that was not being rezoned, so any idea?
What are you talking about? I just didn't hear what you were talking about.
Behind Liberty Creek, the Liberty Creek Edition by Target. So the green belt back there, where it was up for rezoning, but it was actually turned down from what we were told, but now they're actually performing work back there.
What work is being performed down there right now, Gary? You may as well come to the front of the room, Gary. Manal.
I'm going to attempt to field that one.
Would you tell everybody who you are?
Good evening, everybody. My name's Manal Moladov. I'm the Director of Community Development. I address planning questions, and I ensure the implementation of the comprehensive plan. So in regards to your question... So in regards to your question, absolutely right. There was some activity a few months ago related to that open field adjacent to your subdivision. The request initially came through by the applicant to rezone the property and do some higher-density residential development. It was still single-family residential development. They chose to withdraw their application. There is some activity there as it relates to clearing brush and those types of things. If they do develop, they will be developing under their existing zoning, which is single-family nine, so the minimum lot size would be 9,000 square feet. But it will not be higher density than that thus far.
Repeat the question, Manal, before you answer it.
There is no high-density development right there.
And in regards to your question, you know, will this decrease the property tax rate? So, you know, when you look at the level of multifamily that we have that is so low compared to the entire community, what we have right now has not necessarily generated a property taxes that allows us to reduce our property tax rate. However, it has put additional resources in the coffers to help us with some of the, you know, infrastructure development that we need. Now, the real game changer is Sapphire Bay. And we've quoted all kinds of numbers about that. I don't have those numbers in front of me. Does anybody want to quote those numbers? It's big. Anybody have them in front of them? Yeah, $1.1 billion development, but as far as property tax generation. But that's the game changer.
Yes, my name is Shannon Johnson. I had read in the Rowlett Times that they're going to start construction on apartments north of Rowlett High School. I'm wondering if that is the case? If so, what is the timeline? When will that start? And what will be done about traffic, particularly during the times where school opens and ends?
Thank you, Shannon. So, I kind of failed to mention this nuance when I was talking about this slide. You know, the myth that city council is approving rezoning left and right from whatever to multifamily. It's quite, actually, the opposite. We've turned down a lot of requests. Not all, but a lot. That's one that we recently turned down. Jeff's going to go back there.
Okay.
You took it from him, you know.
I'm sorry. I apologize. My name is Jeff Winjett. Mayor, if I understand it correctly, there's really three ways a city can gain additional tax revenue. The first being through new development that increases property values. The second, through changes in valuations through Arcad and Decad. And the third being a change in the rate that the city applies to those values. In an ideal world, I think most citizens would agree that we would like to see our tax dollar value that we pay remain the same. And so in the instance of an increased valuation, we would like to see a lower rate to offset those two things and kind of let the momentum of growth carry the increases in service that the city provides. Has the council had any discussion on potential tax rates for the coming year? Or kind of come to any sort of consensus on what we're expecting to see as far as tax rates go in the coming year?
Thank you, Jeff. So, that's Nirvana. We agree with you conceptually. You know, that's one of the reasons the state of Texas put the 3.5% cap is to try to maintain that at that rate. It's just such a balancing act, you know? You saw the numbers with the increased response times on Priority One calls. We've got to fund those police officers. We've got to keep up with the growth in this community. You see deterioration in the neighborhood roads. We've got to keep investing in neighborhood roads. We've got to keep investing in Millers and Dalrocks and, you know, Rowlett Road to make sure we keep up with the increase in density that's happening in this North Texas region. So it's a real balancing act. Would we like to be able to do that? Absolutely. We have been able to maintain the tax rate or decrease it over the last several years, but we have not been able to provide sufficient resources to maintain the dollar amount that every resident has paid year over year, even with new development. Now, Sapphire Bay is going to help that. And we believe that when Sapphire Bay comes to fruition, we will be able to substantially have an impact on our tax rate. But we're not there yet. So that is our hope, absolutely.
Hello, Eric Ernst. One of the items in the 2015 bond package was to get the Merritt Road connector basically, or the Liberty Grove connector basically shovel-ready, the environmental studies and the designs for that with the hope of, if it was ready, we could hopefully get federal funding or TechDOT funding on that. So if anybody here is from the north side of the city, morning rush hour and evening rush hour now backs all the way up Liberty Grove, onto Princeton. In the evenings, it's backing all the way up onto the George Bush feeders. People are trying to get creative with exit strategies to get out of the north side of Rowlett now, which is impacting other areas as well. I was just wondering, one, has the design and environmental specs, that phase been completed? And what's the progress towards getting outside funding for that?
Is that you, Paul?
Thank you.
Yeah, Gary and I, the one can handle that. From a design standpoint, that one is also a 60% design. We have had a certain segment of the environmental clearance done. We had a conference call with the North Central Texas Council of Governments probably about a month or six weeks ago to lay things out, to see if there is some funding available through the Council of Governments. We also submitted that as a major capital improvement project with Dallas County, so much like the Miller Road Bridge, we would possibly hear this summer if we're granted that award.
It's very necessary. Ask me about water, Jeff. Come on. This young lady here has been raising her hand. You want to talk? No?
I have just a question.
That's fine. I was just teasing.
Well, I've been seeing development all around the town, the build of apartments. Do we have any statistics? How, what is the filling rate? How, you know, percentage and the interest and things? Because, you know, I've been watching across the lake in Rockwall, they had a great development, and then it kind of went down. And there's still a lot of business spaces there that is not filled. And it's not as thriving as I'm sure the developers in the city would have loved. So I just wanted to see how, or how can we predict that all these investments from this taxpayer standpoint is going to come to fruition? And it's really going to benefit all of us rather than build something and then it's going to be empty?
And what was your name?
Eva Stewart.
Thank you so much for that question. I hope everybody heard that question. You know, I think you were talking about the harbor development in Rockwall that maybe hasn't been as successful as they had hoped when they built that. You know, there's no guarantees in life, right? Knock on wood that we don't have another greatest recession. But the details that have gone into the plans for Sapphire Bay are just incredible. And, you know, the market research and, you know, the amenities that are going to be down there. The surf component of this development has, you know, draw from across the world in regards to people coming in and utilizing that asset and spending lots of money to have a facility of, you know, such high quality in that particular sport. So a lot of market research has been done in regards to how do we make sure, let me rephrase that, a lot of market research has been done in regards to how does the developer make sure that that development is going to be successful? And it really is the totality of it. You know, it is the surf component of it. It is the lagoon attraction. It is the show fountain. It is the 500-room, you know, Class A resort. It is the 70,000-square-foot conference center. It is the trail system surrounding the lake on a peninsula with a piece of land like no other. So it's not one particular thing, it's the totality of it all. And we really think that appropriate market research has been done, not only by the developer, but also by independent third parties that the city has contracted with to make sure that the assumptions that the developer has put into their plan makes sense from a market condition standpoint. So there are no guarantees, but what I will guarantee you is the amount of research has been extraordinary to make this as successful as possible. And it's a much different development than the harbor. Thank you for your question. You don't have to if you don't want to.
No, I'm not sure if, my name is Pat Ryaboy, and I'm not sure if this question has been asked or if I understood the answer. But we have just Miller Road and 66 as east-west thoroughfares, right? And so are you saying that north is going to possibly be another planned thoroughfare? Because that's all we have.
Well, so, if you're on Liberty Grove and you're trying to get to PGBT, you're going all the way up to the service road that currently exists at PGBT. What we're developing is a direct route further on down towards Waterview that cuts off that corner that gets directly to PGBT. So it's not another north, or east-west route, but it's a traffic congestion reliever that's needed up there. Does that answer your question? So, the question was, so are there not any planned east-west additions to our transportation network? Yes, there are. So that's I-30. And if you haven't heard us talk about I-30, we are so excited. I-30 is going to get a lot of additional lanes. So I-30 as we currently know it, you know, there's not a shoulder on the inside, so if somebody breaks down on I-30, they block traffic, right? So what's going to happen to I-30 east-west, I-30 proper, is everything's going to be moved over a little bit, and there's going to be a shoulder on the left, and there's going to be a shoulder on the right. But the most exciting part about I-30 is there's going to be a whole new independent bridge structure, eastbound and westbound, and walking and biking trails also on those. They're going to be separate and apart from the I-30 lanes as we currently know them. So, you know, as you can imagine, that type of construction project is huge, lots of money, lots of environmental impact, but it's approved, it's funded, and it's currently making great, great progress. So we anticipate, well, what TechDOT tells us is that the portion from Bass Pro to Dalrock will be completed in 2023, concurrent with when we think Phase 1 of Sapphire Bay will be completed. That's going to help a lot with the east-west route. Now, if we could stop the people moving into Texas, it's going to help a lot. You keep having these huge, you know, population increases, you know, you can't build enough roads for everybody that's coming in. You've got to have alternative modes of transportation. And there's a lot of work being done on alternative modes of transportation. And I will see it in my lifetime.
Hi, I'm Daryl Testan. You had a chart up there that had the Priority One calls showed they were increasing. That's the absolute number. But it seems like if we're trying to measure crime trends, how are those numbers on a per 1,000 population basis? Are they going down?
So can you pull that? Oh, you got it up here. So, you know, you can see the top six Priority One and the trends in there. We thought that was really important to show you those major trends in that. And then you've got, you know, all Priority One calls in 2017, 2,900, and 2018, 1,200, and 2019, 1,200. And then you've got, you know, an increase in the total calls, not just Priority One calls. You know, a lot of that is traffic management due to increased traffic patterns and increased population across the area. And we picked up managing I-30 for that segment. Does that answer your question, Daryl?
Well, I was wondering if the trend is downward, if you measure it on a per 1,000 population basis?
So, population is increasing, and Priority One calls are down.
Priority One calls are down. I see that they're going up from 410 to 470.
That's the top six priority categories. The next line, total all Priority One calls. You can see 17, 18, and 19. And we have our new Chief of Police, Chief Godfrey, here. Do you want to say anything, Chief?
Sir.
You've got to use the microphone.
Okay.
He never turns down an opportunity to talk.
Based on the question alone, yes. The way it would be moving is, as our population increases, if the numbers go down, then yes, per 1,000, we are down. These are our top six Priority Ones. We have about 20 Priority One calls that are in that category, but these are our top six as far as what's keeping us most busy, I guess is the easiest way to say it. These are our big calls that you all are going to find in social media and that you're going to hear about. They're going to make the newspaper that you're going to be most concerned about because they do affect your quality of life. So these are what we track and what we really try to focus on, keeping the numbers down if possible. Does that help at all? Good.
So Denise, I'm going to pause here. Do you have anything you're seeing on Facebook that you'd like to highlight? Can somebody give Denise a microphone? Paul? Paul? Could you give Denise a microphone?
Yes.
I keep catching people in the middle of a conversation. I love it.
We had a couple concerns about school overcrowding with the multifamily developments. They were wondering, are we working with GIST and RISD?
Okay. So the question is, you know, concerns about school overcrowding. And, you know, we voice those concerns for our residents and on behalf of ourselves because, you know, there are some schools that are very crowded right now, and there are some schools that are not. And, you know, it changes depending on whether you're looking at elementary, or middle school, or high school. GIST and RISD are so engaged with not only the community of Rowlett, but all of the surrounding communities, Saxon, Garland, and Rockwall, in regards to what is going on in the region. And they are trying to keep up with this growth, just like we are trying to keep up with this growth and service this growth. So while we're not directly responsible for this as a city and a municipality, we work hand-in-hand with GIST to help them understand what's going on in our communities. I do know that they are planning a bond offering. I know GIST is planning a bond offering in the very near future, and a great deal of that is going to be facility-related to keep up with the growth.
Are school districts affected by the 3.5% limit?
I love that question. Yes and no. So, school districts have a 2.5% cap. School districts have a 2.5% cap. Anybody disagree with me? I'm 99.999% sure. School districts have a 2.5% cap. Here's the difference. What school districts don't get funded through property taxes, they get funded through the So the total funding's not going to change, but the portion from property taxes is going to change. They're only going to be allowed 2.5% growth versus whatever their cap was before, which would have been, I think, unlimited, or I don't think they had a cap before. So, when you think about this, so here's what the state did. We're going to decrease the property, we're going to decrease the rate of growth on property taxes for the individual homeowners. Yay! And I mean that sincerely. We're going to limit how much school districts can increase their taxes they're collecting from individual property owners. And we're going to fund that difference through state funding. But we're not going to do the same for cities and municipalities. They have to figure out how to manage with a 3.5% cap and manage all the growth that's going on in the region. Completely different dynamic. Really like what they did with the school districts because the states need to be funding more because they have the funds. They also have the funds to help some of these municipalities, but they have chosen not to do that. Editorial comment.
Hi, my name is Alyssa.
Hi, my name is Alyssa. I grew up here in Rowlett. I work in Rowlett. And I'm really interested in seeing more white-collar jobs here so I can continue to work here rather than be in working class. Are there any plans for that besides, I saw the hospital pop up off of Scenic, that addition, I thought that was great. Is there other stuff like that coming in or?
Thank you so much, Alyssa. You know, we're very, very fortunate to have Baylor Scott &amp; White here in our community and not only have them, but to have the growth that they're experiencing. You know, there's communities in our surrounding areas that have lost hospitals and that's very devastating to a community. So we're very, very fortunate and very, very glad to have them in our community. Our North Shore has been dedicated, set aside, targeted for white-collar jobs. And we are working so hard to try to bring in those types of employment opportunities in this community. You know, if I was to say, what is the number one thing we need to do in the city of Rowlett? That is to bring in more employment. So Jim, would you talk briefly about what we're doing in regards to our focus effort on the North Shore? And what you've got to remember is all those properties up there are owned by individual homeowners, not by the city, but we're working hard. So this is Jim Grabenhurst, our Director of Economic Development.
Thanks, Mayor. As you indicated, our North Shore District, we've got over 1,000 acres along PGBT. That has long since been dedicated for job creation. And our recent comprehensive plan designated that area as the Future Employment Center for the Rowlett. And so we are working, we have done a target industry study to identify different industries that we're going after in marketing. We've got a dedicated website, northshorerolett.com, that you can go and get more information about our marketing efforts there. We're working with a third-party consultant right now that is helping us market the North Shore District to prospects. DFW has seen a significant amount of job increases and so we think it's just a matter of time before we're able to start to see projects happen within that North Shore District. The other thing that I'll add is also the Sapphire Bay project has areas designated for Class A office space. That'll be an integral part of their development to not only have the entertainment side and some of the live side, but also the work side. So those are really the two focus areas that we have to bring employment base to Rowlett.
So we're right at 8 o'clock. Denise, is there anything else on the feed that we should address that we haven't? I've taken care of it. I can take one or two more questions and certainly we will be around here afterwards if you'd like to come talk to us individually. Anyone else? Right here. You're going to ask me about water.
So I wanted to piggyback on a question that had come up earlier and I'm sorry I didn't catch your name, but she mentioned the multifamily housing and what percentage do we have?
Thank you. I did answer that.
Tenants that are in those at this point.
Thank you. I'm sorry. So, you know, here's what I will say about vacancy rates. So it's estimated in 2020 that the DFW area will have 7.7% vacancy rates for multifamily. That is a very, very good vacancy rate. The Apartment Association of Greater Dallas, am I close? Estimated vacancy rates for Garland, which they group Rowlett with, I'm sorry, that's their thing. They estimated our rates at 9.4%, something like that. Here's what I'll say. When a multifamily comes on service, when it first opens up, the vacancy rates are very high and it's going to take time to absorb that. So if you're talking about a point in time or if you're talking about a normalized rate or you're talking about a rate over a year, it can be much different. I think we have, you know, some vacancy in this town that we need to absorb in our existing units. And some of that is about bringing those new units in service in the not-too-distant past. And, you know, the city council is very, very aware when we're making these decisions. It's not only about what are the planned units and the absorption period of time for the planned units. It's also about the units that are currently in service and being brought in service that are not fully absorbed yet and how long those will take to absorb. So we're considering all of that. And I'm sorry, I forgot, failed to answer that question. Thank you. Anything burning? All right, last question.
I'll indulge you. What about water? Is Rowlett a?
Oh.
Is Rowlett a part of the negotiations with regard with the?
Okay, so I can talk about this for 30 minutes. Anybody want to hear about it for about 30 minutes?
How about three?
Three. Okay, so I will say this. We are pushing hard. And it's a very complicated issue. And if you've read anything that I have written about water, you'll know it's a very complicated issue. What I'll tell you is the Public Utility Commission is going to have a hearing on April 14th, February 14th, Valentine's Day. And we are hoping and we are pushing to encourage them to have a rate study. What's the right words? Rate? Huh? Rate review. Blake wins that one. So there's never been any kind of oversight in regards to the rate structure and the actual rates. So the three cities that have sued the North Texas Municipal Water District that are member cities are pushing for that and Rowlett as the biggest customer city, we are also pushing for that. So we are hopeful that the PUC will decide to perform a rate study. And then we will be a very big part of those discussions and that testimony before the PUC of why the rate structure as it currently exists is not fair to our residents. If the PUC decides not to call a rate study, then we're back to square one. So that's the current status. And I will be at the PUC hearing on Valentine's Day if anybody wants to join me. No. All right. Thank you, everyone. Really appreciate you being here. We're here if you want to talk to us about any other questions or if you want to talk more about water. Thank you.